Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting for Monday, May 12th, 2025. I'm Rob Walter, the Board Chair, and I am calling this meeting to order. So I will introduce the folks here up here on the dais. We have Caleb Snell, our Teacher of the Year. We have Shannon Lancaster, Board Member. Catherine Moore, Board Member. Sam Tredaway, Board Member. Dr. John Kupicki, our Superintendent. Next to me is Greg Mills, our Vice Chair. Pamela Escobar, Board Member. Melanie Freeman, Board Member. So with that, I'd ask you to stand as we do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in thy heart, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and law.
So our agenda is out there. It's been on board docs for a couple of days now. Board Members, I need a motion and a second to adopt our agenda.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Tredaway.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mills. All in favor of adopting our agenda tonight, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, we have a, our agenda is set and we will move on to that important items where we have recognition. So we'll start with the Impact Through Education Award and we have Mr. Phil Furr coming to the podium. Welcome.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Kupicki, good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Harrisburg Elementary School and Roberta Road Middle School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I would like to invite our Equitable representative, Leo Spardella, to join me at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for its continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. Tonight, we will conclude our 15th year of honoring those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate your support and thank you for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber and to Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the award plaques each month. Now, on to tonight's awards. May I have the Harrisburg Elementary Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Harrisburg is Natalie Brown. Natalie, please come forward with your family. Natalie Brown was chosen for the Impact Through Education Award because she is an excellent example of greatness at Harrisburg Elementary School. She is a positive role model for all her fellow students and constantly exceeds all expectations. She is not only a leader, but also kind and caring. Every morning, she comes in with a smile on her face and is ready to start the day. As soon as her work is done, she is the first to ask if she can help with anything. Her academics achievements, her academic achievements are also to be highlighted. She's grown greatly throughout the year and we all know she will do great things. She, she helps not only in her classroom, but in their kindergarten classes at Harrisburg Elementary, too. When asked what all she does to help, Ms. Vaughn had this to say. Natalie is a great helper for our kindergarten class each morning. She shows up before any of the students arrive and waits on each of them to greet them in the mornings. Natalie assists the students on unpacking their things and getting organized for their day. Then she walks around and monitors and interacts with the students as they work in centers. Natalie's a stellar example for all the positivity project character strengths, but her humility and love of learning really speak for themselves. Congratulations, Natalie. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Harrisburg Elementary School. Congratulations. Lawson, please come forward with your family.
Yep, gotta go stand with your principal. Lawson Russell is an outstanding student at Harrisburg Elementary School. He brightens everyone's day. Each morning, Lawson works in a K-2 Learning Connections classroom as a fifth grade buddy. The teachers and assistants in that room say that Lawson is a wonderful helper in the classroom. He's very responsible and aims to make all students feel welcomed. He jumps right in, willing to help any student or teacher without being asked. He genuinely cares about others and is passionate about including our kids. We are so thankful for all his help this school year and know he has a bright future ahead of him. Lawson was selected as a fourth grader to lead the House of Amistad once in a fifth grade. He leads the house meetings for fourth and fifth graders. He leads small house meetings with kindergarten classrooms and he helps lead PBIS and schoolwide house meetings. At least once a month, Lawson appears on our Head of House P2 videos that are broadcast on the morning announcements. Lawson is also a leader in his fifth grade classroom and advocates for himself and others. He strives to do his best on all classroom assignments and participates both in whole group and small group. Outside of school, Lawson loves playing soccer year-round with CSA and spending time on a golf course with his dad. He enjoys reading comics, Friday night movie nights, and camping trips with his family. He's an animal lover and is a great supportive brother who loves hanging out with his sister and his puppy. Congratulations, Lawson. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Harrisburg Elementary School.
Gotta get your picture made. Also from Harrisburg is support staff member Sherri DeBarge. Ms. DeBarge, please come forward with your family. Sherri DeBarge, also known as Ms. Sherri, has been a beloved and integral part of Harrisburg Elementary School for 18 years, known not only for her exceptional work as a custodian, but for the compassion, pride, and dedication she brings to everything she does. Sherri is a devoted mother, grandmother, friend, and staff member at Harrisburg Elementary School, becoming a quiet yet powerful force of support and care within the school community. Sherri takes great pride in her work, treating the school as if it were her own home, every corner reflecting her commitment to excellence. She approaches each task with seriousness and a strong work ethic, ensuring that students and staff have a clean, safe, and welcoming environment every day. But what truly sets Sherri apart is her heart. She is known for checking in on colleagues during difficult times, offering encouragement, a listening ear, or simply a comforting presence. Her acts of kindness, often behind the scenes, have uplifted countless numbers of lives. As she receives the Impact Through Education Award and prepares for a well-deserved retirement, which we are sure she will spend in her garden, we honor not just her years of hard work, but the legacy of compassion, excellence, and dedication she leaves behind. Ms. Sherri has truly left Harrisburg Elementary better than she found it, and she will be deeply missed. Harrisburg Elementary will always carry a piece of Sherri DeBarge in its heart. Congratulations, Sherri. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner at Harrisburg Elementary School. Ms. Sosa, please come forward with your family. Throughout her 21 years of teaching at Harrisburg Elementary, Laura Sosa has become an incredibly important person to her students and first-grade team. As a teacher, her patience and kindness allow her to connect with each student, giving them the confidence they need to succeed. Her unwavering belief in each student's abilities inspires them to persevere, even in the face of challenges. Year after year, her classroom has provided a space where students feel safe and supported. She believes that each student has individual learning styles and needs. She has dedicated her time to creating engaging lessons which cater to diverse learning styles, making learning fun and accessible for all students. For her first-grade team, she has been a mentor, friend, and respected colleague. Her empathy, adaptability, and expertise make her an invaluable part of our team. She has helped foster a collaborative, respectful environment where all trust and learn from each other. Teaching requires a special kind of person, and Laura embodies that. She has inspired and shaped hundreds of minds throughout her career. Congratulations, Laura. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Harrisburg Elementary School. We will now continue with our May Impact Through Education Awards by welcoming Roberta Road Middle School. May I have the Roberta Road Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from, from Roberta Road is Ethan Dent. Ethan, please come forward with your family. Ethan is a seventh-grade student at Roberta Road Middle School. He has participated in the dual-language immersion in our county since kindergarten. During his middle-school years, Ethan has continued his trend of academic success while honing his skills in listening, reading, writing, and speaking in the Mandarin language. Ethan also serves on the Student Council. His leadership of the Culture Committee within Student Council has helped his peers identify ways in which they can become involved in our school community and improve their overall student experience. This year, Ethan demonstrated excellence at the county-wide Chinese New Year celebration. While hosting students and their families at our school and from Cox Mill Elementary and Harrisburg Elementary, Ethan's leadership within the program allowed all attendees to immerse themselves in the Chinese culture while sharing things that all the students have learned during their academic experience with the DLI program. Congratulations, Ethan. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Roberta Road Middle School. Alexandra, please come forward with your family. Alexandra is a member of the first class of students who will have spent their full middle-school years in the new building at Roberta Road. She has a history of academic excellence. However, her contributions at Roberta Road Middle School do not end with her achievement in the classroom. Alexandra is a member of our school's band and participated this year in all-county band. She also leads the Raptors with her lightning-fast abilities as a member of the track team and gets the crowd excited in her role as a cheerleader. Alexandra is also a member of Student Council. She advocates for her peers and for her community. In her role with the Student Council, Alexandra works hard to foster a student experience in which she and other students can take pride. One of Alexandra's favorite events at our school is a canned food drive that we host around Thanksgiving. Her stewardship of this event demonstrates her commitment to bettering the community. Congratulations, Alexandra. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Roberta Road Middle School. Mr. Welch, please come forward with your family. Mr. Bobby Welch is the Choices Room Coordinator at Roberta Road Middle School. In his role, he must curate a delicate balance between building relationships with students while also holding them accountable for their decisions. Mr. Welch has perfected this balance over the years. His dedication to our students allows them to understand that he cares deeply about their success and achievement. Beyond his work with students, Mr. Welch is willing to pitch in to help our school move forward in any way. He coordinates student arrival and dismissal in a way that makes it appear seamless for 900 students to enter and leave the building each day. Mr. Welch partners with our bus drivers and interacts with them on a daily basis. Drivers and staff in the Transportation Department always have great things to say about him and view him as a strong advocate for students. Mr. Welch is the essence of a team player. He's always checking on students and motivating them to stay at the top of their game. Mr. Welch is a vital asset to Roberta Road Middle School, and while his work is often out of the spotlight, his contributions to the staff and students at Roberta Road Middle School are invaluable to the success of the school. Congratulations, Bobby. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Roberta Road Middle School. Ms. Bradley, please come forward with your family. Ms. Heather Bradley officially wears the hat of school social worker at Roberta Road Middle. Unofficially, however, Ms. Bradley goes above and beyond the definition of her role to champion students and school community. Ms. Bradley has spent time building relationships with families and supporting them through both highs and lows. She takes time to understand challenges and matches each family or situation with resources that will improve each student's abilities to engage with learning and excel academically. Ms. Bradley also serves as the faculty co-advisor for Student Council. In this role, she allows students to learn more about the school community and to hone their leadership skills in ways that benefit all of the students at Roberta. Ms. Bradley serves as the CIST representative on the School Improvement Team, the CIST Team Lead, and participates in the Student Wellness Committee. Though these, through these roles, Ms. Bradley provides valuable insight and leadership to ensure students at Roberta Road receive the best possible student experience during their middle-school years. Congratulations, Heather. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Roberta Road Middle School and the 1,080th Impact Award winner. Congratulations to all our recipients, and thanks again to our partners, Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce for your partnership. We look forward to seeing you all again in September.
Thank you so much, Mr. Furr. Our next item is 4.02 Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and we have Dr. Michael Williams at the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, Dr. Kupicki, and to our viewing audiences, both here and those watching the livestream. It is my pleasure to recognize our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for May. Tonight, I'd like to begin by inviting Josh Forrester and Abby Forrester of Hillbush Ford to join us here at the front of the room. We always like to offer our sincere thanks to Mr. Vaughn and his team at Hillbush Ford for their tremendous generosity and continued sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program. During the course of the school year, more than 600 teachers across our district were nominated by their school communities as for Teachers of the Month. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for May is Allison Farah, Media Coordinator at Carl A. Fur Elementary School. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Farah, her family, and any members of the Fur Elementary School Administrative Team here to please come forward. Ms. Farah, you were nominated by a parent for this award. Tonight, I want to share her nomination. Ms. Farah is the Media Coordinator at Carl A. Fur Elementary School. She hosts a book fair for her students in the fall and spring. I often volunteer for a day or two during the book fair, so I have the privilege to see Ms. Farah in action. She works tirelessly to make the book fair a success and to ensure that every child is able to enjoy it. She chooses diverse books in multiple languages and across reading levels and price points. She seeks donations so her book ferries may help students who need it. Earlier this year, I volunteered on the last day of the book fair, and there was an internet outage. In the face of this challenge, she worked even harder to deliver a positive experience for her students. At the end of the day, I was exhausted for her, and I believe she deserves special recognition for this service. She truly brings the joy of reading into the homes of our children. So thank you for the impact you have made to teach, engage, and inspire the students in your school, and congratulations on your selection as Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
Bowers and Mr. Chuck Taylor coming to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to you, Members of the Board, and Dr. Kupicki. If I could have Mr. Jeff Kaiser, any special guest that may be with him tonight, join us down front, please.
This evening, we are here to honor and certainly celebrate an extraordinary member of our auxiliary services team. Mr. Kaiser embodies the true spirit of what it means to be a hero. Our event, uh, this award is sponsored by Great Wolf Lodge. The recipient of this month's Everyday Hero Award is someone who has consistently gone above and beyond. He impacts the lives of many each and every day, and he does this through acts of kindness, dedication, and selflessness. Our honoree is not someone who seeks recognition or applause, but is one who finds joy in making a difference, no matter how big or how small that might be, whether it's putting through, putting in extra hours, lending an extra hand, or just motivating others with his can-do attitude and esprit de corps. Mr. Kaiser should serve as a source of inspiration for us all. His tireless efforts have not only brought positive changes, but are reminding us that the impact that one person can make. It is great admiration and gratitude that we present this month's Everyday Hero Award to Mr. Jeff Kaiser, Lead Electrician for Cabarrus County Schools. Joining me here tonight is Mr. Chuck Taylor, our Director of Facilities and Maintenance, and he is going to share with you why Mr. Kaiser was chosen as this month's recipient.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Kupicki, it is my honor, absolutely my honor, to be a part of recognizing Jeff Kaiser tonight. I can think of no one in our department who deserves this award anymore. Jeff has been with the FMD team for 25 years. Now, I did ask him if he'd give me another 25 years, but I can't tell you what his response He is a dedicated, true professional in every sense of the word. He is second to none when it comes to technical knowledge. This is very remarkable. You have to remember, and Sam is probably the only one that really knows what I'm talking about, we have over 100 years of technology that we deal with every day, from 100 years ago to current, and Jeff has mastered all of that. Jeff is a very soft-spoken person whose patience and thoughtfulness have gotten his team through the many challenges they face, and they face those daily. When I think of Jeff, I instantly think of that old saying, "Walk softly and carry a big stick." There's a subtle difference with Jeff, though. Jeff's big stick is restraint and resolve. He never, he never founders on me. He's always there, and he's always a source of inspiration for his team. Jeff is the kind of person that inspires all of those around him to be a better person, and he inspires me as well. I wish I could be half the man that you are, Jeff. Now, I can assure you all, he is a very hard-working guy, and I have to preface that for what I'm about to tell you. I did a poll amongst all of the FMD team members, and none of us have ever actually seen Jeff dirty. How he does this is a true mystery. I'm not sure if in this century we'll figure that out, but, uh, Jeff, please accept this award, and it is well deserved.
recognitions. So we have Ms. Melanie Ritter and Ms. Kendra Glover to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Kupicki, District Office staff, school administrators, school staff, students, and families. It is with great pride and enthusiasm that I share the outstanding accomplishments of our students who have excelled through their participation in career and technical student organizations, also known as CTSOs. These organizations provide powerful platforms for our students to apply their classroom knowledge, develop leadership skills, and technical skills, and represent Cabarrus County Schools at the regional, state, and national levels. Their dedication and professionalism and achievements are a reflection of the high-quality CTE programs that we offer here in Cabarrus County Schools. Programs that we offer have unwavering support from our educators, families, and community partners. Tonight, we recognize the North Carolina State Competition First Place Winners and our CTSO State Officers, and we will recognize them by each CTSO. Before I begin, I would like to thank Ms. Kendra Glover, who supports this initiative and our CTE programs. She's in the back. She does a great job for us. She manages all of our CTSOs and travel and all of the paperwork that comes along with that. I'd like to welcome up here Ms. Allison Finley and Ms. Chandra Hester from Cox Mill High School to start us off.
Good evening. We will begin with the recognition for our DECA chapters. DECA is aligned to our CTE marketing curriculum. North Carolina DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Introducing Cox Mill High School, Fed Modak, 2025-2026 North Carolina DECA State President. Avi Deschmuck, 2025-2026 North Carolina DECA Dixie Pines Vice President. And our former North Carolina State President, Ram Charam Petty-Laurie. He won First Place Winner in Entrepreneurship Series. Introducing from Hickory Ridge High School, Saki Moreau Marsh, First Place Winner in Retail Merchandise Series. Please welcome Melissa Thompson, FBLA Advisor at Hickory Ridge High School.
Good afternoon. Next, we're going to recognize our FBLA students. FBLA is aligned with our CTE Business and Finance Curriculum. North Carolina FBLA is affiliated with FBLA-PBL, which is a national organization with 250 student members and 56 affiliate state organizations. It provides students with leadership opportunities as well as a means to compete with our students in regional, state, and national conferences. The event that these young men became, were recognized in, was the Virtual Business Personal Finance Online Simulation. They tested their skills at managing their own financial lives, and they competed against students across the country. They came in first in the state. We have Nashant Chichili. We have Brayden Hunter-Hummer. And Akil Satish. Now, please welcome Jennifer Hill, FCCLA Advisor at Central Cabarrus High School. Next, we will recognize our FCCLA student. FCCLA is aligned with our CTE Family Consumer Sciences courses. The work of FCCLA helps students and teachers focus on a variety of youth concerns, including parenting, family relationships, substance abuse, peer pressure, sustainability, nutrition and fitness, teen violence, and career preparation in four specific career pathways. I would like to recognize Chris Icana. Chris competed at our state leadership conference in March and won in fashion construction. He designed an evening gown.
Next, we will recognize our HOSA students. HOSA, or Health Occupation Students of America, Future Healthcare Professionals, is aligned with our CTF Health Science Curriculum. HOSA is a global student-led organization whose mission is to promote care opportunities in the health industry and to enhance delivery of quality healthcare to all people. This evening, I have three students with me. The first one is Anika Ramajum. Anika is a senior this year. She placed first in Medical Math. Next is Anjana Ramajum. She placed first in Medical Law and Ethics and will be representing us in June at ILC in Tennessee. And the last person who is here with them this evening is my first State Officer for HOSA. This is Mrs. Mina Koo. She, for the 24-25 school year, was the Southwest Regional President, and as we enter into HOSA's bicentennial, year-fiftieth year for '25-'26, she will be representing NC HOSA as State Treasurer.
Last, but certainly not least, I'd like to welcome Mr. Jeff Murray, First Skills USA Advisor at J.M. Robinson High School.
Good evening. Next, we're going to recognize our Skills USA students. Skills USA's mission is to empower its members to become world-class workers, leaders, and responsible American citizens. We improve the quality of our nation's future skilled workforce through the development of Skills USA framework skills that include personal, workplace, and technical skills grounded in academics. Our vision is to produce the most highly-skilled workforce in the world, providing every member the opportunity for career success. And at J.M. Robinson this year, we had three first-place state conference winners. In Skills Project Showcase Transportation, two-time back-to-back winners Keith Hun and Benjamin Perez-Naba. And in Skills Project Showcase Carpentry, Mr. Benjamin Murray.
A huge congratulations to all of our students, and an even bigger thank you to our advisors who have spent countless hours preparing our students for competitions and next-level work in all of our CTE programs. Thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate
All right, we're not done yet. We have Full Ride Scholarship recognitions, and we have Ms. Betsy Naval. Are you here? I'll give her a second, and she'll be at the podium.
Good evening, Board members, Chairman Walter, and Dr. Kupicki. I'm Betsy Naval, High School Counseling Coordinator, and I am proud to say the class of 2025 has already been awarded over $35 million in scholarships, and the number continues to rise. Tonight, we have the great privilege of celebrating some truly outstanding accomplishments by our students, achievements that reflect not only their hard work and talent, but also the support of their families, teachers, and the entire district. Full Ride Scholarships are among the most prestigious awards a student can receive. Covering tuition, room, board, and more, these scholarships recognize exceptional academic performance, leadership, and character. They are highly competitive and represent a major milestone in a student's educational journey. I have asked them all to come in together, and as I say their name, they will step forward. We are proud to recognize an extraordinary achievements by five of our students who've been awarded the prestigious Good Night Scholarship to attend NC State University. Good Night Scholarship is one of the most competitive and generous scholarships in the state, awarded to high-achieving North Carolina students pursuing degrees in science, technology, engineering, math, or STEM education. This year's recipients have demonstrated exceptional academic excellence, leadership, and a deep commitment to service and innovation. They are Katie Mitchell from Northwest Cabarrus High School, Sweida Choxy from Northwest Cabarrus High, Selena Ramirez-Zarate from Early College, Emma Grace Swenson from Cabarrus Early College of Technology, and we are hoping one more makes it, and we'll announce her in just a minute. Please join me in congratulating them for earning this well-deserved honor. We are excited to announce another student going to NC State, but this time on the Park Scholarship, Adit Kamdar. The Park Scholarship is NC State's premier merit-based award given to the most accomplished and promising students across the nation. Each year, thousands of students apply, and only about 40 are selected. It provides exceptional opportunities for personal and professional development through study abroad, service projects, and leadership training. Adit was selected not only for academic excellence, but also for his remarkable leadership, dedication to service, and strong moral character. This award represents both a tremendous achievement and a bright future. Congratulations. It is now my privilege to recognize five of our students who have been awarded full four-year scholarships through the nationally-renowned Quest Bridge National College Match Program. Quest Bridge partners with some of the most prestigious colleges and universities in the country, including Stanford, Yale, MIT, Duke, to provide Full Ride Scholarships to students who have demonstrated exceptional academic achievement, leadership, and resilience in the face of financial challenges. Our recipients are Olivia Toby Maderas, Michael Shewery from Early College High School. I'm sorry, I'm going to back up to it. Olivia is from Northwest Cabarrus High, and she'll be attending Boston College. Michael from Early College will be attending Washington University in St. Louis. Joseph Pham from Central Cabarrus will be attending Pomona College in California. Gabriela Duarte from Central will be attending Columbia University. We're so proud of all of you and can't wait to see all you accomplish. Now, I'd like to recognize Leah Green from Cox Mill High School, who has received the Chiefam White Scholarship at NC Central University. That scholarship is awarded only to a select number of students across the state who demonstrate exceptional academic performance, leadership, community service, and strong moral character. The scholarship provides four summers of fully-funded enrichment and networking opportunities that could include international travel. We're excited for you, Leah. Congratulations. Next, we would like to recognize Chandler Battle from Hickory Ridge High School, who will be attending Norfolk State University on the Duretts National Institute for Math and Applied Sciences. This scholarship is awarded to students who are not only academically outstanding, but also demonstrate a passion for pursuing careers in STEM fields. Chandler has shown remarkable dedication and promise in these areas, and the scholarship will provide him with the resources and support to continue his excellence. We would like to recognize Shrikirti Shenthala from Cox Mill High School, who will be attending She's going to Meredith College on a Merit Scholarship. She's awarded this based on her exceptional academic achievement, leadership, service, and character. Congratulations. Next, I am proud to recognize an outstanding student athlete who has earned an Athletic Scholarship to compete at the collegiate level. Kristen Embler from Hickory Ridge High School will be attending Furman University on a softball scholarship. Earning a college athletic scholarship requires years of training, perseverance, and sacrifice. These students have demonstrated exceptional commitment to their sport, we have a second one, hopefully he'll get here, while balancing academic responsibilities and representing our district with pride and sportsmanship. Congratulations. I would now like to recognize Samira Godbolt from the Early College High School. She will be attending NC A&amp;T on the Lewis and Elizabeth Doughty Scholarship. This scholarship is a preeminent scholarship awarded to entering freshmen who have shown excellence in academics and scholarly leadership during their high school matriculation. These selected will receive the Four-Year Renewable Scholarship, and they may use some funds to travel abroad during the fall and spring semesters. Congratulations. It is my honor to recognize a truly exceptional student, James Leopard, from West Cabarrus High School. He has been accepted to the United States Air Force Academy, a distinction earned by fewer than 10% of applicants nationwide. This prestigious appointment is not just a college acceptance, it's a commitment to serve our country as a future officer in the United States Air Force. James has demonstrated outstanding academic achievement, physical fitness, leadership, and a deep sense of duty, qualities that make him an ideal candidate for one of our nation's most elite service academies. Please join me in congratulating We'd like to congratulate Ram Petlaurie for going to UNC Chapel Hill on a Full Ride Okay, at this time, I would like to thank all of you for letting us show these students their accomplishments. These accomplishments reflect the strength of our schools, from dedicated teachers and counselors to the families who guide our students every day. Thank you all for helping our students achieve their dreams. At this time, please turn to shake the board's hands and then exit through the
I guess we could say, wow, those are really impressive achievements in students. Our last recognitions for the evening are going to be arts recognitions, and we have Mr. Bart Talbert. Are you here with us? He's in the hall. Give him a second, too, to come to the podium. Welcome to the podium.
Dr. Kapicki and members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to celebrate the state and national level achievements by our Cabarrus County Performing Arts Students and Ensembles. I will begin tonight with the ensemble achievements and the representatives from each school who are able to be here with us tonight. I have several schools to recognize, so please hold your applause until the end. The following school ensembles received superior ratings at the 2025 North Carolina Music Performance Assessment. MPA is the only state-sanctioned event that provides a summative standards-based assessment designed to measure student performance as it relates to the goals, objectives, and grade-level competencies specified in the North Carolina Central Standards. Rating of "Superior" is the highest level of achievement possible at MPA. The following school ensembles, in attendance tonight, received that coveted "Superior" rating. The Harris Road Middle School Sixth Grade Mixed Chorus and Seventh and Eighth Grade Mixed Chorus, under the direction of Ms. Rachel Giuliano. The Hickory Ridge Middle School Eighth Grade Band, under the direction of Mr. Nick Carl. I'd also like to note that the Hickory Ridge Middle School Band received a Superior Rating at the Charleston Music Festival. The Concord High School Symphonic Band, under the direction of Mr. Ed Harper. I'd also like to note that the Concord High School Band just celebrated their 100th anniversary at their concert this past Thursday night. The Cox Mill High School Symphonic Band and Wind Ensemble, under the direction of Mr. Drew Carter. I would like to note that the Cox Mill Jazz Band also received a Superior Rating at the North Carolina Jazz MPA this past Friday. And the West Cabarrus High School Wind Ensemble, under the direction of Ms. Emily McNeil. I would like to point out that this was the first MPA Superior in the history of West Cabarrus High School. Moving on to individual arts achievements from each school who has students in attendance tonight. Under the caption of band performance, the following students auditioned and were selected for the North Carolina All-State Band, from Hickory Ridge Middle School, Keegan Regenberg and Samuel Griffin, and from Cox Mill High School, Riley Stewart. The following students auditioned and were selected for the Honors Performance Series at Carnegie Hall, from West Cabarrus High School, Elaytu Chogli, Jonah Butler, and Turner Boone. Congratulations to all of these superior performing ensembles and students.
We will move on to the next area, which is our approval of minutes. We've had three meetings in our last month, so the minutes for those meetings on April 7th, April 14th, and April 21st are out there for the board members to have reviewed. And if there are no changes, I'd need a motion and a second to approve our minutes for last month. Motion by Mr. Treadaway. Second by who? Catherine. All right, any discussion? All in favor of approving our minutes for April 7th, April 14th, and April 21st meetings? Say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? All right, our minutes have passed. So we will move on to our next section, which is Board Chair Superintendent Comments. And I guess I'd first like to say to all the mothers out there, I hope you all enjoyed your Mother's Day. We really appreciate your sacrifice and the impact that you've had in our lives. As we approach the close of another school year, I wanted to take a moment to recognize the hard work and perseverance shown by our students, our staff, and families throughout this year. We know this final stretch can be both exciting and demanding, especially with the EOG testing getting underway. I want to offer a few words of encouragement to our students. You've worked hard, and this is your time to show what you've learned. Stay focused, do your best, but understand you're much more than any test score. So our board is especially looking forward to celebrating one of the most inspiring milestones with our 2,500 seniors this year, is graduation day. And graduation actually begins this Saturday with our early colleges, so we're looking forward to that. In the following week, our other high schools. In total, we'll have 12 graduations ceremonies to celebrate with our students. So as it was mentioned just a while ago, it was very impressive that this year's senior class has collectively earned $35.6 million in scholarships. That's just, I think, a complete record. That's a phenomenal achievement, a testimony to their education, as well as the support they receive from our teachers, their families, and our community. So as we wrap up this year, I'd like, again, to let us all continue to support one another. Let's finish strong. Let's take time to celebrate the many successes across our district. I've had Board Member Pam Escobar ask for a point of privilege, so at this time, I'd like to recognize her.
Thank you, Board Chair. When I ran for school board, I promised to represent all kids, and I'm passionate about it. In November, I congratulated my colleagues and said, "And I pray we are all champions of public education." I say silent prayers all the time for students to feel welcome, comfortable, and safe in our schools. Sadly, who I am has been called into question. My faith, my values, my reason for serving this board has been dissected and attacked, and the work that we do has somehow been buried. I want to set the record straight so that we can move on from any misunderstandings from last month's school board meeting. As a little girl, I went to a religious school from first through eighth grades. A lesson I learned in school, and something that still guides me today, is love one another as I have loved you. My very first year in Cabarrus County at Cox Mill Elementary's Fall Fest, my daughter left my side and ran to hug her kindergarten teacher. All my worries were put at ease. My daughter loved her school because she felt loved and felt like she belonged. When I think of the lesson, love one another, I think of a child in our school system who owes significant school lunch debt, whose meals are not guaranteed at home. I think of a teacher that works two, maybe three, jobs to make ends meet and still finds a way to keep their classroom supplied. I think of a family who just moved here or speaks another language, and how scary that must be. I think of parents who are working hard to give their children the best life possible. God knows my heart, and I know my heart wasn't shown to you. Love one another. That is what my faith guides me to do, and I will continue to serve and lead. It's who I am. I believe it's what we're called to do at the very core of service to Cabarrus County. Our elected leaders in the county and at the General Assembly have the power to not just talk of faith, but lead with it. They have the power to address our school district's financial struggles and our teachers' low pay. They have the power to secure fully funded schools and to address our students' health needs. They have the power to ensure every child is fed and cared for at school. They also have the power to do nothing. I know county residents are not easily distracted and will focus on what matters. Loving one another and loving our community are values that belong to all of us. It's my hope that my fellow elected leaders remember that we are here to serve all students and people of Cabarrus County, and will join me in focusing on the real issues at hand. Let's get back to work and what we were elected here to do, to look out for all kids.
Thank you, Ms. Sure, she feels supported. Thank you. Before I hand it to Dr. Kapicki, I do want to recognize Officer Latania Nessman for coming back again today and keeping us safe here, watching over our school board meetings. So thank you very much. So with that, Dr. Kapicki?
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Just a real quick statement, but I just wanted to remind all of us here this evening, you know, to reflect on what we saw in the last 30 to 45 minutes. I know sometimes it may seem cumbersome and long when we recognize our students, but that's the why. That's why we're here, and that's what we enjoy doing the most. It's what keeps us focused on the main thing, which is our students. And the thing that I always take away from it, and I tell everyone, we should be bragging more about our students and their achievements. We should be telling people about all the great things that are happening in our schools. I cannot thank our teachers enough for the great work that they do, because without them, we're not having this conversation. And I really deeply appreciate our teachers and the work that they put into making sure that excellence continues here in Cabarrus County. It defines us. And I always talk about, and I'll say it over and over and over again, we compete at the local level, the state level, and the national level. And you need no more than what you saw this evening as proof of that. If you really were paying attention, our kids are doing things at the local level, succeeding at the state level, and exceeding at the national level, and going places that some of us may never see. And that's just a handful of what the representation of the 2,600-plus kids are going to graduate in a week here in Cabarrus County represent, because that's everywhere in all of our schools all the time, every day, every month, all year long. That's what we see all the time. That's the excellence that we have come to expect and expect, and it's what our kids continue to deliver on. So don't let that be lost on you this evening, what you see. It's a special place. We have a special school system. Our school system can compete with anybody, anywhere, anytime, and we are among the best in the nation. And the proof is in what you saw this evening. So don't let that just kind of glaze over what you watched and forget about that. Make sure you're telling that to folks, and you're bragging about that. You should be incredibly proud of that. There are kids, and they're doing great work, and we really need to commend them and continue to tell our story. I don't know about you, but quite frankly, I get tired of the negative stuff that's out there and exists in our world, and I hear that constantly about that negative stuff. And I just kind of wonder in my head, where are you? Because that's not what I'm seeing when I'm dealing with our kids or talking with our kids. They're outstanding, and I'm very, very pleased to see what I saw this evening and see all the time. So I thank them for that. And again, my heartfelt appreciation of all of our teachers, because they are just phenomenal in what they do. I really appreciate them. So as we close out another remarkable school year, I want to take a few moments, reflect on what we've accomplished, and to again express my deepest gratitude to every member of our school community. To our teachers, staff, and administrators, your dedication, creativity, and unwavering commitment to our students have made this year, again, a success. You faced many challenges with courage and turned them into opportunities for growth. Whether in the classroom, the office, or behind the scenes, your efforts have made a lasting difference, and I am incredibly proud to stand beside you as well as humbled. To our students, you are the heart of everything we do. Each of you has worked hard, grown wiser, and shown us the power of resilience and curiosity. Whether you're in kindergarten or graduating senior, your journey this year has mattered. You've made friends, built skills, and taken steps towards your future. Keep believing in yourselves, because trust me, we believe in you. To our families and community members, thank you for being our partners in education. Your support at home, at school events, in an everyday conversation has been vital. Together, we've created a learning environment where students feel seen, supported, and inspired. To our graduating seniors, this chapter of your life is soon coming to a close, but a new one is just beginning. We are proud of the people you've become, and we are excited to see where your journey takes you. Go forward with confidence, ready to enroll, enlist, or employ, and always remember where you came from. You can always come home. As we head into summer, I encourage everyone, students, staff, and families, to take time to rest, to reconnect, and to enjoy life beyond the classroom. Read a good book, explore the outdoors, spend time with loved ones, and do the things that bring you joy. You've earned it. Let's return in the fall with fresh energy and new ideas, ready to build on the momentum we've created together. And again, I thank you for a wonderful year. Stay safe, stay well, and have a great summer break. Thank you. Mr. Walter?
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki. Appreciate those comments. We'll move on to our next section with our guest speakers. So this is the opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board. We have, I think, about 10 folks that had signed up. Each of these individuals has been given the policy, the guidelines, and the expectations when giving public comment. Individuals will have three minutes. Someone speaking for a group has five minutes. So again, I just ask you to be mindful of your time limit and your comments. So with that, we will bring up our first speaker, who has signed up, was Michael Roberts. Welcome to the podium.
Okay, awesome. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, and Dr. Kapicki. My name is Michael Roberts, and my wife and I have lived in the city of Concord for the last seven years. I volunteer with Dan Marshall of Capital Ministries here in Cabarrus County. First, I want to thank you for the hard work and sacrifices that you and your families do make for the people of Cabarrus County. Second, I want to correct a few misstatements made at the April 22 meeting. Capital Ministries is not and does not lobby. We are a 501(c)(3) organization that neither proposes nor opposes legislation. We welcome elected officials from all political parties and religious denominations to attend our Bible studies. Again, we're not a lobbyist organization. An insinuation was made that my colleague, Dan Marshall, might be attempting to influence votes on the board members. The service Capital Ministries offers is to elected officials, and we offer a biblical perspective on an issue if asked. We do not tell public officials how to vote. And you don't have to take my word as truth, however. I would invite you to join us at any time and arrive at your own conclusions. What you will hear is Dan praying for you and your family. He will most likely be thanking God for all the board members, asking God to give you wisdom and discernment in your decision-making, for strength and protection for you and your families, and that's what you would hear. Perhaps hearing all this for yourself, you might consider it a good idea that Dan does ask God, the Creator, to help you. And if you do vote to pray before your meetings, you will be in very good company. Our founding fathers, in the face of danger from warships that were sent from Great Britain, prayed daily in their assemblies for His divine protection. We are here today as a result of their answered prayer. After He provided divine protection for them, they went to Him again for discretion and wisdom for the Constitutional Congress, that they had to formulate a new government, which there was no blueprint. They prayed daily before their sessions to God, the Creator, and on September 17, 1787, Congress adjourned, and the U.S. Constitution was born. Today in Washington, DC, invocation and prayers are spoken before the start of every congressional session. They see the need to pray, and they pray. In Raleigh, prayers are recited before every session of the House and the Senate. The Cabarrus County Commissioners begin their meetings with prayer. This board has major issues to deal with in the upcoming '25, '26 school year. For example, beginning to see overcrowded classrooms, offering competitive salaries for teachers, major building repairs, and some buildings need replaced. You're also asking $341 million from the Cabarrus County. All these issues are weighty and consequential, and I would think you would appreciate every resource available to assist favorable outcomes for the students and families of Cabarrus County. In closing, if you... In closing, if you decide to begin meetings with your prayer, I would encourage you to use the model that our founding fathers used and address your request to pray to the Creator. Praying to anyone else other than God, the Creator, they're simply words. We don't need just words spoken. We need prayers. Words become prayers when they are directed to only one person, God, the Creator. Thank you for your time, and continue to do your best for the families of Cabarrus County.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. So our next speaker is Mr. Paul Wannish, and I have here your speaking for a group.
Yes.
Welcome to the podium.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, board. Good evening, county, county, good, good evening, board members and Dr. Kupicki. End of grade testing is upon us. If you extend the thought to reviewing progress the district has made in the last year, you would come up with a grade for the board and/or the district. I found twenty-one responsibilities in the North Carolina statutes and use these as metrics for the rubric. For each, I assigned a grade, A through F. The grades I assigned, this comes up with, the grades I assessed translate to a GPA of two-point-six, which is acceptable. But there are four areas that I assessed as an F. Reviewing these failing tasks, we have the topic in general. There are at least nine different state laws that are not enforced within the district, some of the district policies as well. Very poor community involvement within the community on the logic driving CSS conclusions. The overall planning for the future of the district and creation of capital budgets are dismal. Basic growth assumptions of one percent don't align with accepted population growth rates, which are three percent for the Charlotte regional area. Maintenance of each school site is inconsistent. This is most apparent in the athletic facilities of middle schools, with rows of weeds growing in the track and outdated technology. The State Department of Education planning also has a site capacity calculator based on number of classrooms, not on the student base. If you have a hundred kids or you have thirty-five thousand, these formulas work the same. I'd like to go to the idiom that says, we've all heard about ten pounds of poop in a five-pound bag, and you laugh when you hear it, or you chuckle, whatever. The reality is, it's a formula. It's something you use, and you find out you can get six and a half pounds in. If you dehydrate it, you can get all ten in, right? So these are the things you have to do. The formulas you have to apply, just like you do to the rooms in schools across the district. The calculator will provide expectations on the site student capacity, which CCS has used. This doesn't consider how many students you currently have, but how many each site could possibly support. I haven't seen any indication that this tool has been used in the district, but I forwarded the Excel workbook to Dr. Bowers and others. The other area that an F came in to monitor conditions of school plants. All year, every site has buildings below, all year, every site has buildings below the minimum state building code standards with no resolution in sight. Another area to report certain information to the DPI superintendent, failing to produce the required legislated class size reports. I suspect the district has failed to use the DPI planning department for our school facilities. DPI has defined the planning size for each classroom. We apparently chose to ignore. Sizes vary from seven fifteen to fourteen hundred per room. Ironically, probably not one of the hundred mobile units we have meets this requirement. The last area was to submit organizational reports and other information to DPI. Besides the LCS reports, this includes the superintendent's attestation that this district is in compliance with the laws from K through three. These have not always been generated, and appropriate waivers have not been secured. I do want to give a lot of credit to the teacher who spoke up at the, Mr. Green's state superintendent meeting, who told him that she had over thirty students in her class, and that is an unacceptable number. She didn't say she was from Cabarrus, but students should not, class sizes should not be thirty. I do hope for all the county residents and students better execution next year and look forward to a higher report card in the future. And again, this is my assessment, and I think people like Pam Escobar are very well represented here on the board. I thank every one of you for your efforts. I just think there's more that could be logistically done within the board and the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wannish. So our next speaker signed up was Keisha Garrido. Are you here? Welcome to the podium.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Keisha Garrido, and my husband Ben and I are the proud parents of four children who attend Mount Pleasant Schools. We are supportive of all of our children's endeavors, and when our eldest son Hampton came home on April tenth and told us his track coach was told he would no longer have a job at Mount Pleasant High School, we knew that we had to get to the bottom of this as he was not the logical candidate. So I'm here to seek clarification and to bring attention to this matter to you guys. I do have a list of things that I would like to go over with you briefly. So just a few things that Carter Lucker brings to the table. Former Division One football player at East Carolina collegiate strength and conditioning experience at UNC Chapel Hill and Wofford College. He led football, basketball, baseball programs to conference championships. As for what he's done for us, our track and regionals, our men's track team placed first in the conference. Our girls were runners-up for, in twenty-twenty-three, they scored zero points in lap finishing last place. Twenty-twenty-four, finished fifteenth, and twenty-twenty-five, here we are in first place. The ladies, twenty-twenty-three, girls, seven points. Twenty-twenty-four, finished sixteenth, and twenty-twenty-five, fourth. Numerous school records were set with regional and state qualifiers. He was also named the YVC Track and Field Coach of the Year after telling, being told that he would no longer have a job at our school next year. This was due to an allotment, nothing that he had done, you know, to warrant this. So I found this out on May tenth, and then on May eighteenth, I requested some public records available, some financial documents. And I wanted to share with you what I found out. So in August of twenty-twenty-three, seventeen hundred and nine dollars and three cents were spent from the track and field account for a dry race board for the football field house. September of twenty-twenty-three, over eighteen thousand dollars was raised for a weight room. The weight room has never been built or accounted for, and that money is still in the football account. March twenty-twenty-four, eight hundred dollars came out of the track account for Pierre Timing, which should have came out of the general athletic account. And then three twenty, twenty-twenty-five, five thousand dollars was moved out of the volleyball account to the general athletic account without the coach's authorization. So I'm just here to seek clarification about these items as well. I've been speaking with many people. I've emailed the board members. I've gotten a few responses back, and I appreciate those. Dr. Williams has been very receptive, and Dr. Kupicki I've spoken with, and he plans to address this after graduation, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention sooner rather than later. And so I appreciate you guys. So just really quick, in closing, Carter Lucker sees the gifts that each of his students have, and he teaches them the skills needed to reach their highest potential. By believing in them, they are then able to see what they are capable of. He has definitely left a lasting impact on our family and the many students at Mount Pleasant High School, and I hope that he'll be able to continue to do that for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing with the board. My next speaker signed up is Russell Wright. Are you here? Not here, okay. Next would be Nancy Hoforth. Welcome to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, board and Dr. Kupicki, and also to anybody watching online and everybody who has taken their time to be here this evening. In my years as a public school teacher, each day began with the school reciting the Pledge of Allegiance together. As a social studies teacher, I believe this pledge doesn't violate the separation of church and state as set forth in our Constitution. My students included people who were Hindu, Muslim, Christian, Jewish, and yes, nonbelievers. I made it clear to my students the importance to respect all faiths. I do not believe that invoking God's presence at a board meeting is called for. God is present everywhere by our invitation or not. As for an invocation, making a meeting of the board to be taken more seriously, this is a weak argument. I was going to enumerate all of the things that Pam Escobar has already spoken of so eloquently this evening, the things that the board addresses all the time, which are very serious, and I believe the board takes those things seriously. I think these topics are taken seriously, but we need to make sure to not be distracted by a well-meaning idea, which doesn't take into account the diversity of our community. And we need to work together to make sure that all members of our board, schools, and community feel welcome and able to participate. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, I have our former board member, Keisha Sandich, are you here? Welcome to the podium.
Hey, how y'all doing? So I will speak to the first speaker that came this morning, this afternoon or this evening, and let you know that I, as a former board member, I too started going outside in the hallway for prayer with the rest of the group, and I stopped going to prayer because I felt uncomfortable. We started getting emails that were very uncomfortable from Capital Ministries. I asked that I be taken off that list. I am at least one of two people who felt uncomfortable with the presence of Capital Ministries, and I just wanted to set the record straight on that one. So each one of you board members up there had the opportunity to safeguard this community and this district on last meeting when all of the Republicans in our county came after one of your colleagues. Nobody said, used their platform to say a word to stop your Cabarrus County Republican Party from sharing a soundbite of things that were taken out of context and has resulted to bring potential danger to this community. So I think you have that opportunity now to say something to your party and to let folks know it's not okay to bring danger to this community. We are, right now, operating in a deficit in this county and in this school district, and I think all of you know that. Our lunch balances here are irate. I have counted about forty-two thousand dollars in lunch debt. I have not seen any of you use your platform to say something about it. When do you plan to do that? Are you waiting for something? Because I'll tell you, at the end of this month, likely before the beginning of next month, those schools will have to dig into their budgets and pay that forty-two thousand dollars. And I don't know that there's schools that can come back from that. I know there's one school at twelve thousand dollars in lunch debt. My daughter's school is at ten thousand dollars in lunch debt. I came and told y'all about this two months ago. Again, I have seen none of you use your platforms to either coordinate, Rob, you're the chair. You make the committees. Coordinate a committee to look at this. Get folks from in our community to figure out the problem because our schools can't keep doing this. It's been a problem since I was on the board, so that means we are not addressing it, and somebody needs to do something. And I said this last time, so I'm gonna say it again, and real fast at that. I can tell you that I have been hearing, just like everybody else has been hearing, of the possibility that teachers will not get a supplement. I don't know how true that is, but I will tell you that we are already fighting to keep teachers. We don't have enough teachers, and we're losing teachers by the week at this point in our district, and we have an opportunity to do something about it. Rob, you told us, I want to say it was in January or February, I can't remember the month, that you felt picking Shannon would get the county commission to work with us. I need you to pull that card right now and ask them to work with us and make sure we get all that we need because you and this board selected their candidate. I will tell everybody, there are five representatives that come from Cabarrus County in the legislature. There are five school board members on here that are Republicans. There are most of our councils here in Cabarrus County that are Republican. Our county commission is Republican. Y'all, what's up? Y'all should be talking to one another and figuring it out. We should not be operating in a deficit in this county and in these schools. Every single last one of y'all signed up, at least that's what I think, and that's what I see, to serve public education. I see people supporting opportunity scholarships, and I think y'all know that takes away from public education. Last time I checked, it does. So if you want opportunity scholarships and maybe you don't understand how that pulls away from public education, you might need to resign right now and go serve at a private school. Before I left today, my son asked me where I was going, and I said to the school board meeting, he said, "I thought you was done with that." I said, "I thought I was done too." I need y'all to pick yourselves up by the bootstraps, recognize your power, and use it to get stuff done. Start being accountable. Pay attention to this county commission, and look how much drama they bringing to this county, and y'all don't follow in they footsteps. Power is yours. I'm gonna watch y'all do it, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Sandich. I think the next two speakers were not available, so we're gonna move on to Mr. Hampton Garrido. Are you here? Welcome to the podium.
Good evening, guys. I'm Hampton Garrido, and I just want to talk about the loss of my coach, Herr Lucker. He's been a really, really positive impact to my life. He's turned me into an incredible athlete, and without him, I wouldn't be here. So I would like to listen to his accomplishments. I'm now a all-conference athlete, an all-county athlete, and all-region athlete, and I qualified for the state championships this Saturday. I would like to say he means a lot to me, and by him not being at our school next year, it really affects me. So, and I've asked my principal for clarity. There has been none. I've just been told that we lost an allotment, and she can't tell me anything, which I just really think is not fair. There has been a lot of coaches that have stepped down from coaching football, and Herr Lucker was one of them. So is it a coincidence that nine coaches stepped down from coaching football? I really don't think so. So I think we need to find the main root of the problem and really fix that. So it just really upsets me that my coach has to be the guy to go, and I just want to know, why does my coach have to leave our school? And he's the most qualified one, you know, he works at every single sport. My mom, she's talked about all the success that we have as an athletic team, now all of our athletic teams, so I just think he's done a really good job, and that we really shouldn't remove him from our school, and I really hope you guys pay attention to this matter and get it fixed for us. Thank you.
I appreciate your courage speaking to the board tonight. Last speaker that had signed up was Sabrina Berry. Are you here?
Welcome to the podium. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight, not just as a concerned parent, community leader, or a Democrat, but as a woman who puts God first in her life, above any political party. I value integrity and leadership. I cannot stay silent after what I witnessed Pam Escobar say. Some Democrats may have missed the point when Pam said, "How much God do you need? How much prayer do you need?" Let's be clear, that wasn't a thoughtful question. That wasn't a sincere concern about religious freedom. That was mockery, plain and simple. That was sarcasm. You don't protect liberty by belittling people's prayers. You don't foster inclusion by mocking what others hold sacred. And I say this not as a stranger. I say this as someone who personally brought you to the church, Pam, who embraced you, welcomed you, supported you, and voted for you, and now I feel lied to because you didn't speak like someone who believes what you once claimed to be. You didn't speak like a woman of conviction. As a Democrat, I always say we have to hold ourselves and each other accountable for how we're governing ourselves, not just in words, but with action. It was unethical. It was wrong, and it shows exactly why we need better representatives running for office. We have to stop making excuses for bad behavior just because someone wears the same political label. We don't need representatives who are committed to transparency. We need representatives who are committed to transparency and to serve with honor, not people who mock faith. This was, they were not asking for a government to sanction a religion. They were not demanding mandatory prayer in school. They were not trying to impose any particular faith. You could have simply suggested a moment of silence. That would have been a reasonable compromise. It allows everyone to pray, reflect, and remain. It allows everyone to pray, reflect, and remain silent according to their own beliefs. That's constitutional, and I do support the Constitution. That includes the right to freely express faith, not just the right to be free from it. If Pam can't speak about God without sarcasm, if she cannot have critical conversations with people of faith without belittling them, then she has no business serving public office, especially not on a school board that's responsible for guiding children and partnering with families of all backgrounds. We deserve better, our kids deserve better, and our faith deserves better than mockery from someone that we trusted to lead. May God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your perspective.
Rob, so you're... Rob, you're at... And I'm going to speak from my heart.
Mr. Serrill, you're at...
How much prayer do you need?
Okay, ma'am, can you...
How much God do you need? These are points that Pam addressed.
Rob, you can't do that thing.
I'm speaking here. In a public school setting, the answer to these questions is none.
Rob, you're out of order.
The Establishment Clause in the Fourteenth Amendment of our Constitution makes this clear.
Can we have our officer ask him to leave?
This is not your church.
Rob, you're shut. That was not necessary, sir. You could have had your time.
You're very welcome. There's a way to sign up, buddy. Thank you. Okay, there's a way to sign up. I had asked to speak. I was shown the email to drop, I signed up to speak, and I was not given permission to speak. I spoke because I signed up to speak. Thank you.
If you would ask him to leave, please.
Yeah. This is not your church.
Okay, apologies for the outburst, but we will move on. All right, approval of our consent agenda is next on our agenda, so we've had a number of items that we talked about last week that we said that we had enough information on. We'll mark a group of those, so we're gonna vote for those in one block. So, I would need a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda.
So, move.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Treadaway, a second by Ms. Escobar. Any further discussion on our consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Motion passes, our consent agenda has passed. So, we'll move on to our next section, which is our items for action on action, and we have two items. We have our CCS Integrated Program Purchases, CNI and Student Services, and this is, we've had our presentation last week, we've had a number of questions that we had answers to, so we had an opportunity now for the public to have spoken. We didn't hear anybody speak on this particular issue, I have not received any other emails about that. Again, it's on our action agenda, so if anyone has any discussion or questions, now would be the time to ask. Okay, well, you have a question?
I just, I think this is a great program here. I do just want to reiterate that it is, the surveys are not mandatory. That was the biggest feedback I got from families, so...
Okay. Anything else? Melly?
I met with Dr. Roth, and I just wanted to clarify for parents that there were a lot of surveys in the past that are no longer given, and they're the wellness ones that people had some objections to, so I just wanted to make that clear, that those surveys are not given anymore. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, if we're good with this item, I would need a motion and a second for approval.
I'll make that motion.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Treadaway, and a second by Mrs. Moore, and this again is for, I'm gonna read it properly. So, this is the Integrated Program Purchases for CNI and Student Services, and the amount So, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion passes. And our last action item for the night would be our school fees revisions, and they were presented to us in two parts yesterday, or last week, I'm sorry, with Mr. LeGrand and Ms. Reeves, so we have the addition, or the increase in the technology fee, and then we have the proposal for the $200 extracurricular fee for the VEX robotics program. Any discussions on this one? Shannon?
I did get some feedback from parents. What is the VEX fee right now?
There is not.
There's not? Yes. The feedback I received was, it's kind of a big jump all at once, so if there's any way we could work with that over the summer, but I did receive feedback on such a huge increase at once, and if it's something that can be implemented, like a little bit this year and a little bit next year. So, I did get a couple calls from parents, and also teachers and coaches that are involved in the program, they're afraid that their students will not be able to afford this.
So, what I would say to that, I think the biggest thing that we are at fear of is the risk of not continuing programming without funding. A lot of this funding was used through ESAR funding or local funding, which we obviously know has no longer existed. What I would share is that scholarship are available for any child that may not have the opportunity to pay for it themselves, so we would certainly not withhold a student's participation in VEX, should there be a financial hardship on behalf of the families.
I completely agree that we do have to make it sustainable. Only concern was so much at once, so, but, and the other concerns were, would there be enough scholarships to go around? But, I do know that we need to make this program sustainable, so I don't know if we can implement it a little bit at a time, so, Dr. Picky, do you?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mrs. Lancaster. What I would recommend is that we approve the fee as proposed, and what I can assure you is we will work with all families and students. The other thing that is a wildcard out here, the wildcard out here is our VEX camps, so we do raise a lot of funding through that. So, I would say, let's see what we gather in, as much as we can offset the costs, we will, and continue to take a look at it. Roughly speaking, I believe the numbers were, I think they were like 503 students, something to that nature. We did the math on this, I think the cost, don't quote me verbatim, I'm close, I wanna say it was roughly $165,000 or so to run the program at whole, and if we raised, the problem is we've been funding this for years, and it's growing, which is great, but it's becoming real costly. The kits are very expensive, the competition's very expensive, so in order to do that, we're trying to offset some of that cost, and some of our other clubs and extracurriculars, our students do have to pay to participate, and we don't prevent anybody in those other extracurriculars from participating if they can't afford to pay. So, what I would suggest is, I hear you, let us see what we do raise, and I'll keep the board abreast as to how we can offset some of that cost as well. And, you know, I'll open up to any business out there that would like to help us and support this by donating any kind of funds to that, to help us do that as well. We would be more than happy to promote that sponsorship and acknowledge that sponsorship if anyone would like to sponsor that, so I will keep the board abreast on that. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I would like to say that they did mention if corporations could sponsor business sponsorships, that would be great, so thank you for saying that.
Anybody else have a comment?
I was just gonna say, and I would think you would agree, is that our finance committee can make that something that we focus on going through the summer, after the camps, we can return to that and look at that.
I will happily add that to Phil Penn's plate.
Okay, I'm also concerned with the big jump in the cost, and we're saying that if a child can't afford it, we're gonna...
No child will be turned away, I can assure you of that.
But you got families with multiple children, I think that becomes quite the burden to have your family participate, at least with the bands, you were able to work and do some fundraising, so there was always the opportunity that they could do.
That's another great suggestion, Mr. Walters, a fundraising opportunity by the VEX club itself is probably another way to offset some of the costs as well, so we'll look around every corner, every avenue, and I will come back with the board and kind of update you in the summer as to where, but that itself was a great recommendation as well. I hate to say this, and I hate to be cliche, but this is one of those deals where we're building a plane while it's in the air, because we're kind of, you know, we're a couple years into this, and, you know, as everything else, it's expensive, it costs money, and we have to find ways to fund it.
Okay. Melly?
Yes. How much of these fees are because they're competing?
That is an excellent question. So, there is a registration fee, but as Ms. Calligan shared, actually, we're able to significantly reduce that next year, given that the pilot that we are going to be a part of, the large majority of the fee is actually going to specifically go towards the robotic kits, which previously we were able to use things like ESAR funding for that no longer exist. I will tell you, every day, our team is also combing through grant opportunities, so if anything changes, we will certainly keep you up to date on that, and we are certainly applying for any grants that we would be eligible for, but our biggest concern is making sure we still make this available for our students moving into the next year.
And also, is this fee going to be for the elementary schools also? So, is there any way that we can graduate the fee, like have kids share a kit, or do something like that in the elementary before they get into the competition things? Because it looks like, I mean, if I was an elementary parent, I would be looking at, this is gonna be $250 a year throughout their career. That's kind of sizable.
So, what I would say is the proposed fee is for $200. We are also looking at grant opportunities as well as other fundraising opportunities. If we find a way to subsidize the cost beyond that, we certainly will, moving forward. Additionally, if a family has a hardship, we would encourage them to apply for a scholarship so that we can make sure that they have the opportunity to participate.
Is there a way for us to say the fee is only towards a certain, I mean, right now, it looks like it's in there for K through 12, right? So, are we voting on that, that it's K through 12 without any...
That's how it's presented, you would have to make a motion to amend it.
I would like to investigate that, to see if there's a way to graduate the fee as they get older.
Are you suggesting that we postpone this vote, so somebody can investigate that? Are you...
Yes.
All right, well, in order to do that, again, you would have to make a motion, you'd have to have another board member second that motion.
So, what would be the impacts of putting this decision off for, say, a month? And would we know then what fees come in from camps, and we would be able to maybe promote this to see if there's businesses that we already have relationships with that would be willing to step in and kick some funds towards this program? Would that be helpful at all, or is this time-sensitive right now?
I think the best thing from a process standpoint is to prove the fee is recommended, and then kind of allow us to investigate some of the opportunities. I do believe we're gonna be able to offset the cost, but again, I want to remind the board, you know, we talk about budget a lot, and all the items are going to the budget, you know, things come with a cost, and nothing is cheap anymore, and this is an expensive endeavor. I do believe we'll be able to offset it, but I don't, I think if we manipulate or try to manage what we're saying, we know $200 covers $100,000 worth of the program, which is gonna get us on an even footing, we can balance it out. If we start kind of manipulating that number, it's gonna be difficult again, and then I'm gonna have to find the money somewhere else, so I think, and again, there are other things in the district that students do pay for. While I know it is a big jump, I know it seems like a lot of money, I would ask the board to pass the fee structure as it is, let us go back and look into what those other opportunities are. You brought up a couple tonight that I, you know, to be frank, I didn't think of that are kind of really simple and easy to employ, that I think we can do. I think we can be creative and go after it and try and raise the money, but I don't want to be chasing it if I don't have to, because then it becomes more difficult to fund the program. So, I would just ask that we pass it as is, give me the time to, over the summer, to come back and report to the board after the camps, after we talked to the coaches, after I talked to Jennifer Calligan, who's our leader of this program, work with Ms. Reeves and Ms. LeGrand on the fee, and the principals as well, but I think this is the best approach right now as it's presented to you, and I'll leave it at that. It's a board decision, that's my recommendation.
Mr. Treadaway?
Mr. Chair, I'm willing to make a motion that we accept the fee structure that was presented, with the one exception that the VEX fee would be no more than $200, which gives us the flexibility to do what we can do over the summer.
Okay, well, we do have a motion now. You'll need a second for...
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Melly. Further discussion? All right, let's vote on the motion. All in favor of the motion to approve that fee and set a limit at no more than $200 for the VEX program, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Can you bring this back in the July meeting? Is that doable?
Yeah, I can update the board over the summer, July and August, and I could even, you know, probably find some other ways to...
It'd be nice to be for the school year, we'd invest in July if it's doable.
Yep, that's fair.
Just make sure, Laurie, that we add that to our agenda for July, and then you had asked for a point of privilege?
Yeah, I just want to clarify something that was spoken tonight. There was a lot said and stated, and I'm not gonna go into a lot of it, but the one thing I definitely want to address is the supplement for teachers. At no time, and I mean at no time, has no one from the county ever, ever spoke of cutting teacher supplement. I will tell you that the county supports the supplement that the teachers receive right now, the county is going to keep that supplement in place, and they are never going to cut that supplement. That's never been on the table, it's never been discussed, and our county supports our teachers, our county commissioners support that supplement, and our county commissioners have raised that supplement continuously over the last five or six years, and hopefully in the future, we can talk more about increasing that supplement. So, I just want to be very clear on that, that that's never been a discussion, it's never been an item of discussion, it's never been brought up, ever, so I don't want that to be, I don't want any confusion across the board on that. We have never discussed that, and our county, I know our county commissioners support that supplement, and will continue to support that supplement. The other thing on that I would like to say is, you know, it is our state legislature is who pays the bulk of our salaries, so it's the state, at the state level where you have to be talking to your legislators about increasing state salaries across the board. We rank at, depending on what study or what review you look at, what reference point you see, somewhere between 43rd and 48th in the country. So, that is a real fact, that's the fact of the matter, the state pays most of that salary, that's where we need the increase to happen, at the state level. Your county's done a good job at supporting our teachers and continues to support our teachers, so I don't want that to get out there, and I don't want our teachers thinking that that's even been talked about, it has not been discussed, and I assure you that I would be the first one at any meeting that talked about that to advocate on behalf of our teachers, but that's not necessary, because our county does support that, so I just want to make that point clear. So, thank you, Mr. Walter.
Okay, then you and several of our board members are going to rally tomorrow to advocate for our school system.
We are going to rally tomorrow, our board is going there tomorrow to speak to all the legislators, and we will be talking teacher salary, that I can assure you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That was all our action items for tonight. We do have a reason convening closed session, so let me read that reasoning, so we'll need a motion and a second once I finish reading this. Need a motion and a second, that the board convene in closed session to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state, or not, no, or the United States, or not considered public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statute pursuant to General Statute 14331811A1, to consult with an attorney and to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 14331811A3, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 14331811A6. Can somebody give me that motion?
I'll move that we do that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Treadaway. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Mills. All in favor of convening in closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, well, we're gonna say goodnight to our listening audience. Thank you for watching tonight, and we'll see you next month. And board members, we've got about ten...